Live from Sister Baseball Studio. Urban Teachers Lounge is a platform for bridging the gap between educational scholarship and classroom teachers. Voices will include teachers, administrators, educational scholars, community members, and activists.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to Urban Teachers Lounge. I'm your host, G. Fumilayo Devote. This podcast is unapologetically for Black teachers, unapologetically by Black teachers. The purpose of the program is to bridge the gap between educational scholarship and classroom teachers. This week is, wow, I'm stuttering here. This was the first time, this week, the first time I'd ever gone to a school board meeting. And so I'm gonna give you some highlights on it. So please, go on and grab your cup of coffee, because we've got stuff to talk about. Let's go. Hope you got your coffee. I'm drinking tea right now, only because, you know, clearly I didn't go get no coffee yet. So let's get right into this. I went to Atlanta's Board of Education meeting. This week, it was May the, I'm sorry, March the 4th. Hot topic, the biggest thing on the table in this meeting, the biggest issue, was the rating system that APS wants to put in place. So I want to start first with, the name of this is called "The System of Excellent Schools." It's a system of excellent schools. Now, if you're not excellent, right, that means you're a struggling school. Okay, so the bottom line is, the struggling schools, if you fail whatever this system of excellence is, then your options of, the options for struggling schools are three things. And I've found this in AJC, and I would definitely add that article at the end of the podcast, or, you know, I'll leave it for you, to read. One, either they'll close the school. Two, they'll merge the school with higher performing schools. Three, they'll hire an outside group to take over. Okay, I want to first say this. Wordplay is a key thing here. When you say excellence, you say failing, you threaten, the threat of getting rid of. These are concerns, because we've seen this before. We've seen this before with the whole Brown versus Board of Education, and what we asked for and what we got. And so now we're, this is playing out again. So I start there. The main issue that I want to talk about is this rating system. Now, number one, that is the issue. What was said? I sat there for an hour and a half. It was the community portion of the board meeting. That's the part that I went to. It was an hour and a half. And within that hour and a half, thirty people within the community, thirty folks came up and spoke. And of that thirty people, it included, the community showed up, and I was happy. I was actually, I was happy. I didn't agree with everything that was said, but I was definitely happy that their voices were at the table. So the list varies within the community. So we had teachers, we had PTA presidents. There were parent organizations outside of the PTA. I believe there was someone from one of the teacher unions, the AFT. There was a senator there, a state senator. I think he's a retired state senator. The board member who was on the board, who stepped down because he's running for another position here in Atlanta, he was there and he spoke. I was very pleased to see the elders speak. There were children, there were students. And so the range, there was business owners, let me say that. So it was a good range. It was a good age range, I think. A good diverse range of people, diverse types of people. And everybody, I think the majority of the people that came to address or to put in their vote. The board is supposed to, what they were doing was, they were going to vote for this rating system. And before the meeting, the news had already dropped an article that said that they were going to postpone this because it's such a controversial issue. So what was interesting is, the majority of the people that came, that actually wanted to talk about this system of excellent schools, they were against it. They were asking that the board would say no, for various reasons. Some people just said, flat out, say no. Some people were like, at least table it, you know, to get more understanding, to allow the community to have a deeper understanding. I noticed even with some of the conversation, I'm like, I don't know that everybody understands the political pieces that are at play. I don't know if they, everybody understands the money that's at play. So one thing we have to be honest about, Atlanta is gentrifying. And it's rapidly gentrifying. And it's not the first city to do that. We know that there are other big cities, from DC, DC gentrified, New York has gentrified, Chicago, Detroit, Denver, pretty much most places at this point. Philly, in America, you know, gentrification is happening. The issue with that is what's happening to the people. The people who live in the city, the people, the public schools, the public services. And for this point, we're talking about education. So I want to highlight some things that were said to the school board from the community members. Number one, a lot of people got up and said they don't trust the school board. And the reasons why were just the mere fact that you're creating frameworks to close schools, you know, which is interrupting and disrupting neighborhoods, right? They said that they did not vote for them to represent them, meaning the community didn't vote for the representation the board has for them in turn, to turn over the schools to private companies. So basically, the people, we, the people said, "We wanted you to represent us. We don't feel like," or actually, "We didn't ask you to sell our school district off." Because that was said several times, several different ways, in several voices. And ultimately, it's selling the school system piece by piece. And the reality that everything is on the table. And everything on the table definitely gives you the mind of, this is the money involved. Money is at play. So a big, big thing that I heard was no trust for the school board, for the community. Number two, the system of excellence, this rating system. You know, when you get down to the brass tacks, a lot of people, you know, they're having problems because you're going to rate everything. You're going to rate the teachers, you're going to rate the schools, you're going to rate the kids. And then what happens? And I gave you those things, possible closures, possible mergers, or the outside group takeover, which we know is charter management organizations. CMOs is what they call them. One of the things that was talked about, and I do appreciate Atlanta's efforts to make, to bring an equity policy into the district. It is important that we acknowledge that Atlanta is changing, the world is changing, America's changing, and we need diverse, we have diversity. How are we teaching and how are we addressing marginalized people? How are we addressing minorities? How are we addressing this academic gap, the achievement gap, the standardized, you know? How are we addressing access to quality? How are we addressing these things? And again, I want to keep in mind wordplay. Because sometimes we say things and it turns into a cliche, and everybody gets on board, but who's doing the research? Right? And that's what I'm here to talk about. What's the research say? So within the equity policy, you know, are we gonna, what are the results, the accountability piece? Yes, that's something that they're talking about, and that's clearly a whole nother podcast. The next thing that was said by the community is, we should invest our money in strong public schools. And that was a direct hit to this bit by bit cherry picking, as one person said, of the schools, the good schools, the bad schools, and then where this charter management opportunity will come in. So basically, you're turning over public schools to a management company. And I have something to say about that, but, and I will say this. The next thing that came up very loud, which is interesting. The next thing that came up was, they called out the charter schools that we have in the city. They called out some major moves, the charter school management. They called out, I'm gonna leave it there. They called them out. So that was what was said. That was the basic things. We're, we don't trust the board. There's a strong concern that the board is not going to respond to what the community wants, and that's what the community said. The rating system is interesting, because at the end of the day, if you're rated low, you have one of these three options. Either close the school, merge the school, or hire an outside organization. So I'm going to start, I'm going to move on to a couple of things. One, the root of my bias. And I say that because I do love Barbara Sizemore, and that was her words in her book, "The Root of My Bias." And I love that because I wanted to be clear how I feel, how, what lens I'm looking through. So one, my research, my major research that I'm working on right now is Black teacher displacement and gentrification. Because if we go back to these rating systems, and you're looking at the lowest performing schools, if you close these schools down, if you merge these schools, and if you hire an outside organization, where then do the teachers go? Along with where do the children go, right? We have to be honest. In my research, I'm looking at the intersectional, intersectional approach to urban education. The two issues that are on the table within urban education is race and class. If we don't call it out, then we're a part of the problem, right? And not a part of the solution. Racism is real. Classism is real. And what does that look like for public education? Housing, public schools, gentrification, money, 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 money. Who has it? Who has it to move in, to move out? And displacement, not only displacement of the students, the disruption in the communities, and the teachers, right? So what I saw in this board meeting, it just looked like my dissertation played out in front of me. Because with gentrification coming in, the money that happens, the changes and the shifts that happen with this, there's always a chance that whoever scores low is getting rid of, is, you know, gotten rid of. All right, now let me get on to a lens, a very important lens that I want to start, that I want to bring to your attention. Two books that I'm going to talk about briefly, but these are the main books. I have many, many articles to read, many articles and books that I have read. But I think for this purpose, for this podcast, two things. One book is called "The New Political Economy of Urban Education." And then the other book is called "The Charter School Solution: Distinguishing Facts from Rhetoric." All right, so in the first book, "The New Political Economy", there's a word that everyone, I think, needs to know and understand when it's used, when, is it used correctly, incorrectly. Neoliberalism. So I'm going to use the definition that I've landed on, that I really like this definition by Lipman. This is the one she wrote, "The New Political Economy." Her definition is this. It says neoliberalism is an ensemble of economic and social policies, forms of governance, and discourses and ideologies that promote individual self-interest, unrestricted flows of capital, deep reductions in the cost of labor, and sharp retrenchment of the public sphere. So we have to understand that neoliberalism is talking about the money, how you shift the money, who gets it, who doesn't have it, and it's really the haves and the haves not, the have-nots. She goes on to say, "Neoliberals redefine democracy as choice in the marketplace, and freedom and personal freedom to consume." So basically, neoliberals have redefined the word democracy as choice in the marketplace. Number one. And they've redefined freedom as personal freedom to consume. Again, we gotta, we have to notice wordplay. As an English teacher, we talk about implications, what was explicitly said, and what is implied. And we need to understand what is explicitly being said and what is being implied, right? Because at the end of the day, if there's an academic gap, if there's some kind of gap academically between Black children, children of color, and white children, then guess who's going to be the low performing schools? And guess who's going to, instead of, because I didn't hear this. I didn't hear you saying you're going to invest in the public school to make it work. I heard you say, "Because it doesn't work the way you think it should work at the speed that you say it should work." What I heard is that the possibility and the threat is, we're going to close your school down. Isn't that what has happened before? Let's go back into time. Then there was another quote in this same book. It says, "The inner city and the public institutions with which it is identified are pathologic, pathalized, pathologized, right? Pathologized in a racially coded morality discourse that legitimates, legitimates, legitimates their dismantling." So because we come up with words, and we have ways to prove that there's something wrong, that's deficit learning, deficit thinking, we have ways of doing this, right? Then we justify, "Oh yeah, we can go on the dismantlist. We don't need to do this." My question is, and I'm still jumping ahead, but I gotta throw this question in. My question is, if we are educators, if we care about our kids, then why are we selling our school district to a private nonprofit, yet a private organization, instead of fixing it ourselves? Because the other thing that I did not hear or see there was scholars. And I'm talking about, where is the partnership with the teacher programs? Let's talk about GSU, the great Joyce E. King. Let's talk about UGA. These are the two schools that I know that put out students, teachers, that put out teachers, that do research. There are major, major scholars that do research. Emory, that do major research around urban education. I didn't hear nothing about, we reached out to them to get research. Because in my seventeen years of teaching, it's always been research-based, research-based, research-based. So now I'm going to provide you with some research. One of the books that I, the other book that I called out, "The Charter School Solution." I didn't know I was going to love this book. I really didn't. Because the title of it made me think like, eh, okay, what's happening, right? But you need to read this one. So "The Charter School Solution" is a volume of scholarship. And it kind of challenges some of these thoughts about charter schools being better. And now we're wondering, how are you educating the teachers in charter schools? Are they educated? Do you have any tenure teachers? You tend to hire fresh out of college teachers, right? So within "The Charter School Solution," the quotes that I wanted to look at, the one quote, it says, "A paradox of charter schools is the policy assumption that competition and the free market can ameliorate inequality and boost student achievement." That was in the introduction. And even in the introduction of that book, all you heard was policymakers and business owners. I'm sorry, what? Because it amazes me, I will say this forever. It amazes me, when you have a problem with a doctor, you don't go to, you know, an engineer. You go to another doctor, correct? You don't go to the business world, if your doctor gives you some information that you don't like, you go to another doctor. And you expect those qualifications and credentials to hold up, right? Yet, when we question education, and the question is, are we questioning it accurately? That's a whole nother conversation. But instead of asking the scholars that have sat here for years, for decades, the research that has been over and over and over again, we don't even consider it. Instead of asking them to come to the table, the question is, we go to the business world. If I want to know about education, I'm going to talk to people who study this, and not just study education for the sake of education, because we know there's some gaps there. We need to fix some things. But we need to look at it holistically. We need to look at it with who's benefiting and who's being marginalized, right? And if we're going to create an equity policy, right? Then we have to, we, and somebody said this last night. It is counterproductive for you to create an equity policy and then create a system that will close schools or sell out to a charter management organization. Because then I question your ability as an educator. I question your research. Where did you research? Who's that, where's that scholar table? Okay, so with that, you know, let's, I mean, dig into this. It bothers me. It bothers me to know that I work with some phenomenal teachers, right? It bothers me. Yes, there might be one or two teachers that are not, you know, up to par. The question is always this, who's mentoring them? Where's the leader mentors? Where are the teacher mentors? Who's providing support systems? And so when you de-invest in a school system, how then do you expect it to be excellent? Or if you give up, right at the moment, when you're needed most, you give up. So I've told you before that I'm a gardener, and I just thought about this. This is what I know about gardening, and we'll talk about watermelons, okay? Watermelons take a hundred and forty-five days to go from a seed to the watermelon. But within that time, you have to make sure that you pull the weeds out, right? You got to make sure that there's no wild animals coming through, trying to eat your roots and such. You got to watch it. You got to nurture it. You got to put some water on it. You got to put some fertilizer on it. Feed it. Let it get some sunlight. Let it get some water. That's a holistic thing, right? Why would I then try to eat a watermelon or pull up the watermelon after forty days? Well, you know, the watermelon didn't come up. I guess what? I suppose I need to try something else. That's what we've done in urban education. We come up with, every other day, there's a new thing. And think about that, every time you get a new thing, somebody's getting paid. Somebody's getting paid to tell you that you're failing, right? Because if you're failing, that means somebody is getting paid to give you a book, a textbook, to provide a new app, to provide a new program, somebody getting paid. And we're spending money on things that do not nurture. How is it that you're going to make these kind of decisions and you're not looking at the totality of the circumstances? I am also, you know, once a cop, always a cop. I was a police officer. And the major thing about being a cop is the totality of the circumstances. Let's look at the whole picture. Yes, I want excellent schools. I want all of our children, black, white, and green alike. I want everybody to have a fair shake. That means equity. But the thing is, we get, we make these words, and we almost bastardize words when we come up with these cliches on, oh, we want, we, first it was equality. And then we realized that equality, if everybody's standing on the same box, that ain't equality, right? That don't mean you got the same access. Then we move into equity, right? We do want equity, but what does that look like? And guess what? You're not going to change a system, and I'm not even, this is beyond APS now. You are not going to change a system that has been in place for generations in three years, three days, three minutes. It's not going to happen. But guess what? Every time it doesn't happen instantly, and we have to know, every time it doesn't happen instantly, oh, let's try something else. That's not good stewardship. That's not a good gardener. A good gardener would nurture a thing. And so that's my issue. So yes, when I heard some parents say, "Oh, we want this system of excellence," what they didn't know, and I'm making a judgment here, what I feel that they didn't know, they didn't understand the politics behind saying a system of excellence. Because if you understood the politics behind it, you would question. You would question, what makes this new thing better? And why is it that every time you have a new thing, it goes to urban education? And let's be specific, it goes to the schools and the areas that deal with Black and Brown children. So every time you got a new thing, you bring it to our neighborhood. That's a problem for me. So I want us to really examine. You're going to come up with a rating system when we already know? I mean, there's so many, I tell you, I can't, I can't even put it all out here today. I can't. But I hope that you respond. I hope you send me some things. Because I have so much research in my little bit of knowledge, and I have not even scratched the surface. I ain't even at the peak of the iceberg, right? With the things that I've already discovered and researched. So when we know that ratings, ratings are not always equitable. So is this going to be an equitable? Is this going to be a culturally relevant equity policy? Is this going to be a culturally relevant rating system? When scholars that I've read about already have been questioning and asking, when are we going to be culturally competent, culturally relevant? When are we going to have culturally, cultural curriculums? One of the elders spoke about that the other day. It's like, we don't even have culturally, cultural curriculums that we're using. So how is it that you have a diverse system, but you only teach from one lens? How are we doing that? So I want to go back a little bit to, again, to this charter system. Because I have, I have evolved in my, you know, over the years. I do believe that there are some charter systems, or charter schools, not systems. There are some charter schools that probably are trying to be more of a community-type school, are really trying to be culturally relevant, are dealing with students, mind, body, and soul, right? Mentally, spiritually, emotionally, academically. Because you can't just teach an academic, or you just can't teach academics. You have to, for our children, they're whole people, so we have to give them- Uh, or you just can't teach academics. You have to, for our children, they're they're whole people, so we have to give them whole education. And it's not just the school, it's the community, it's the families, it's it's all of us together, right? So I I do believe that there are some charter schools out there that are doing the work, right? But we also have to acknowledge that there is a lot of research that says what we think charter schools are doing and what they are doing. In the same, i- if if we're looking at the same measuring scale, um, they're not as successful. And there's documentation on that. But again, who's being marginalized? Because somebody's getting paid. Um, so I I I wanted to to bring that out. I mean, there were so, so many things that came out um, to this and 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 and. How then do we make changes? How do we move the needle? I think we need to include, um, we have got to include more scholars at this table. You know, we need to have a robust table of business, parents, teachers. Because I, that doesn't seem to happen either. I wanna know, how is it that you never ask teachers what is happening? You know, and and I went to a uh, um. I went to a book signing yesterday of Dr. Bettina Love, fabulous, that's a whole nother podcast, right? But that was one of the things that she said, you know, how is it that we we don't have the teachers at the table? And 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 are we listening to the students? She said, now, and this is a true statement, I teach high school kids. So what I know is, you ask the kids, they'll tell you. Now, sometimes, yes, there's always that moment where it's, you know, personality difference. But guess what? Kids know who is there for them. Are they at the table? What I'm often offended by, and I know my time is 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 ending, nearing. What I'm often offended by is when you ask. You give surveys, you ask the community, you ask teachers, you ask students, but you've already made a decision, you know? Um, and so this is just, like I said, this is just an overview. There's a whole nother section to this. Um, I'm gonna include. Um, I'm gonna include some things to read, some ways to get involved. I mean, the biggest way to get involved is, one, we need to organize and we need to read. And and yes, I'm an English teacher, so reading is important. And we need to not only read, we need to research, we need to cross-examine what's happening. We need to understand the vocabulary words. You know, just because you say excellent, and just because you say failing school, what does that mean? What does that look like? How was that measured? Who measured it and who benefited from that measurement? Because if you're gentrifying communities, we already know that the entire landscape. Has changed financially. And so even we can say, oh, we're gonna do this today, but when you create. A system, who is the system created for? So, um, you know, that we, this is, this will be a continued conversation. Um, I have, I've told you this before, I definitely have some friends that I wanna pull in on this conversation. Um, so be on the lookout, you know, if you're one of those folks that wanna talk to me about this. On another podcast, let me know, reach out to me. Um, and so, I'm gonna leave that right there. But I want us to think about that. Don't forget to check out those two books that I said. I will also send um, the AJC articles. Um, and and just live with that for a minute, rest with it, think about it, process it, right? Um, so, I'm so glad you were here, listening to me. You know, I definitely wanna hear from you, I definitely wanna get some people on here talking with me um, about these issues. Um, I hope that you share the podcast with your community of teachers, scholars, and activists, right? I definitely wanna hear from you. Follow me, Facebook, Instagram, Potomatic, and YouTube. Leave your comments and suggestions. Until then, or until we meet again, peace, power, and progress.